Joe Meyer.
Here.
Eastling. Clinkhammer.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Okay, this is a work session for roundabout phase two connection of Radford and Asbury Road at Hales Mill. For those in the chamber and those of you that are on Zoom, this is a work session. We don't typically take public input during the work session. This is an opportunity for council to discuss topic or topics. They will take no formal action result of this meeting will strictly be dialogue. At the end of this meeting, it is my intent to put the topic up for discussion and potential final approval or rejection on the help me out Beth April, I'm sorry, December 12th meeting unless council directs otherwise. If you do have comments for the council, we always take citizen input at the beginning of the council meeting and it'll start promptly at seven o'clock. So council, we did, you know, we had some notes you were copied in Board Docs. Some information from the engineers, we've got Nate here tonight. Nate, if you speak, we'll have you come up to the podium. We don't have a microphone for you. Ben is on again from MSA. If you have any questions for him. We tried to anticipate what you had based on comments and notes we took from the last, last meeting based on the residents' concerns. So with that, I'm just going to open up for discussion and again, remind you we're recording and our people on Zoom. So please try to remember you use your microphone.
Well, did you want to start with Ben or Nate addressing the concerns that were brought up last?
Yeah, I mean, maybe if Nate, if you want to just talk through them. Again, there was the five that I had gotten. I don't know. Beth, you queried the council for other, other information they may want. We didn't have any requests, correct? Okay. All right, Nate.
Yeah, so included in the information that was handed out in the packet for the work session tonight was the, the email that Jim had sent shortly after the last council meeting that had a few questions that seemed to come up often during the, the public input at the last meeting. So we tried to just answer some of those questions there the best that we could and give you information to help you make a decision. I don't know if you've had a chance to read through those or if you have any specific questions that maybe weren't covered in that information that was provided.
And you know, you tabled this at the last meeting, so I took the initiative to put this out as a work session with as much information and, and you know, people available to you to talk through the issues, answer your questions, answer your concerns, raise new questions. We can get those answered. And again, unless you instruct me otherwise, it is my intent to bring this back on the 12th for further discussion, hopefully a resolution. I think we owe the residents not to string them along. As you know, we don't normally meet the second or the fourth Tuesday. I'm sorry, the fourth Tuesday of December. Not that we can't. But if we follow our typical schedule, if you don't make a decision on the 12th, then it'll be the second Tuesday in January before we meet again. And for better or worse, I would hope that you're willing or ready to give the residents an answer. Keep them, you know, hanging on for another month would be unfair, but if you need that time, certainly the right decision is more important than a quick one.
Craig, you did mention something last time about the T intersection.
That was me.
I'm sorry, what?
I mentioned, are you talking about the intersection on Radford and the new extension?
Correct.
Okay.
I guess some people are having doubts about the T intersection, like if you have a delivery truck or a 18 wheeler. You know, is that going to be difficult to maneuver around there?
Sure. I mean, and Ben can follow up here after my answer if I miss anything, but the T intersection would, it would work. It would be okay, but in discussions with Ben and that, I think that radius realignment of Radford would function much better than a T intersection would. So both options would work, but functionality wise, it'd be better to have that radius off of Radford Road.
Just Nate, one of the questions that goes along with that, I just help me out. How wide is that street going to be that we're proposing to put in? Is that going to be a 37 foot or will it be as wide as Asbury or?
We would probably, yeah, we would match Radford. I would say to realign that up to Asbury. And I want to say that might actually be 37 feet. Because I know there's some extra width there with the striped lane.
So then just so I get a picture in my head with a 37 foot street, the, the property that, that last diagram, the potential, how wide is that? Is that a hundred feet wide, if you remember?
Yeah. So the one, so if it were like the T intersection, you're saying that property that would be run through, that was a hundred feet wide.
So then with a 37 foot, I'm just doing this in my head with 37 foot in the inside, we'd have 20 feet or 30 feet almost plus on both, 40 feet on both sides of the street.
Right away, basically. It wouldn't be 40, it'd probably be about 30 feet, a little over 30 feet of right away on each side.
And just a reminder that the drawing that's in the packet that has the intersection, the east west leg of that, that corridor edge of the bend was actually shifted south. Or north, tell me, because we shifted it north. So at the time, the original plan went into two properties. Potentially the third and the one is the flip house, the Flipper's house. So at that time, you know, we talked to staff, we're looking at some cost saving. So we shifted it north. The radius was still okay per the, the traffic engineers. We shifted it north. So the entire road stayed within that hundred foot boundary, but the original design did creep into the next home to the south. The road itself, and then of course the turns, the radius, the turns did as well. So.
Yeah, I think Beth would, if Ben could pull up that drawing, I'd let him share that maybe.
Do you want me to share the, the one with the curve?
Yes, please.
Okay. Give me one second here.
Doing that, what, what I was just getting at is how much with a 37 foot road and it's a hundred foot wide strip? And then the, the property owners on both sides have their side yards already. So from the, I'm just trying to get from the edge of the street to the edge of their, to the, to the side of their house, there's going to be approximately 50 feet to the road.
I mean, it would be relatively, yeah, something around there, 40 to 50 feet at the closest, I would think.
Do, do you, just, just to break in there, do you guys have an ordinance on how wide the right of way needs to be? Cause you wouldn't need a, you wouldn't need to do a hundred foot right away. I mean, we, we do 80 feet is a fairly typical for a roadway that's not divided like this would be. So you could go narrower. We were, the intent with this original drawing, of course, is this is very preliminary. So we can't, we were trying to show, you know, give room for some, some potential changes to the design. You could go narrower than that 100 feet if you really wanted to. And I, I don't see any reason why you wouldn't go down to 80 feet maybe. I can't share my screen. I'm disabled from doing that. I don't know Beth, if you can give me the ability to do that.
You could.
Maybe.
Again.
Try, hold on. There we go. All right. I'm, I'm, I'm sharing that, what was the earlier?
Screen yet, so I'm not sure what's going on.
Oh, hold on, hold on. Yeah, there we go. Can you see it now?
It now.
Okay, I'm sharing what was the earlier drawing. I actually was just doing some penciling in here on, on what this, how this could change a little bit, but that's, that's neither here nor there. This, this has a lot of variation to it. I mean, we could, you know, we shifted that T intersection to the north to avoid that southern property. If you put the curve in there, you would certainly hit the, the southern property, the 2433 Radford Road. So with the curve, you, you probably would hit that. And I was just showing, you know, we, we made this very square before. You could probably do some variations to it. There's a lot of variations available depending on the purchase of these properties, but this, this is the original drawing that we had before we had the T, which we, we did the T and moved the road north a bit to here so that we didn't impact the 2433 Radford Road property.
Yep. Ben, what I was getting at is then that, that property where you moved it to the north is a hundred feet wide. That's where I got the hundred feet from.
Yeah, yeah. And if you're right, if you bought the whole property, you'd have the hundred feet. You know, so in that section, you would certainly have plenty of room, but you wouldn't necessarily need to retain that much property, I guess, overall.
So that copious amounts of space on either side, Russ, I think, are you thinking that that could be used for screenings or buffers? I mean?
I just, I just wanted to tell the people, you know, that, hey, you get, there's, there's 40 feet from the edge of the road to, to your house at least, 40 to 50 feet, which is my front yard is from perspective, I probably have 25 feet from my front window to the street. So I just, most of our houses are, aren't even back that far. So it's, it's a good buffer is all I was trying to make point of.
Is it possible, Ben? I know that the T intersection did shift everything north with the dead hundred feet then. If we went with that modified design where we stay within that hundred foot width of that property, adding those radiuses should not impact the the third house down, right? The one that's not in yellow?
No, in fact.
Right away catches his driveway.
Yeah. Right. No, I think in fact.
We'd, we'd like to stay away from that at all possible. And that's one other reason that shifting it north and buying that property makes if you're telling me we can make that radius and stay away from that property as much as possible.
Yeah. I mean, realistically, you're, you're, if we, if we tightened this up, you would, even with the old view of this, you would only be hitting this little tiny corner. You wouldn't need to purchase all of this property that's shown here to make it as wide. But I think we could, I think we could potentially shift this north to, if not avoid it, you know, just, just barely touch it. If you were to take this property as well.
Ben, if Ben, how far, how much of the property that, that's listed there as the cruisy property, if we, if we took the road down the center of that twenty, the, the one that's under listed as Luther right now, the one that we acquired for savings, if we took the road down the center of that, but then curved it at the end, do we still have to take out? We definitely wouldn't touch the, the property on the bottom, but what about, how much of the, how much could we save of the one in the, the yellow right above it? I mean, you're moving the curve up then, right?
Yeah, you, you, I'm just kind of tracing on the screen here, but you would have something that would look like, you know, this. And you would, you would substantially impact their front yard. Now, does that mean you need to take it? I don't know the answer to that. That, that's up to, up to probably you and them to work out, right? I mean, if, if the roadway was, was moved up. So let's say we shift what you, what you see here up 20 or 30 feet. That basically would shift that roadway or sidewalk up in, up in this area somewhere. So you'd still hit a corner of their property, maybe not the actual house itself. But it, it would take out, you know, I would say this part of their front yard.
And I guess since I'm the one that's kind of pushing a rounded version, I want to hear what everybody else has to say because I'm, I'm the one that's pushing the curved entrance, but if everybody else is comfortable with the T. Ben, what are you and Nate, do you prefer the rounded or you prefer a T?
I prefer the rounded. I think it'll operate better. The T is as a compromise to, to save a property. It, it, I don't think it will work as well because it's, it's a very low speed type of situation. You know, there's, it, it won't operate quite as well as a T. So I'm, I would, I'm a proponent of this. I mean, that, that is a compromise that could work. But I would recommend using the curve if you can, because it'll be, it'll just operate more the way you want it to. And, and when you're, I mean, in my opinion, this is a, this is a big project, right? I mean, you're, you're looking at buying a lot of properties to try and improve the operations. So the overall goal here is to improve the operations of these intersections and make things work for a long time to come. I feel like when you're, when you're taking on something of that importance, the, the idea that you're making a compromise in another area doesn't necessarily make it, make a ton of sense to me. But again, that's, I'm not in the politics and I'm not dealing with these property owners directly. So you guys will need to make that decision. But I, I would recommend the, the curved roadway if, if I had my choice.
Ben, on the curve, what kind of traffic control would you have or would that simply be a just through and through?
I couldn't, I couldn't hear the question there.
What kind of traffic control would occur with that curve? I mean, with the T intersection, obviously we could work with a stop sign. But with this curve, what are, what are we looking for? Any traffic control to allow access from the farther end of Redford that's been shut off?
Yeah. Let me just delete some of these things here so that you in this, in this scenario, Radford would just free flow. I mean, it's, it's designed for a 25 mile an hour speed around the curb. So people would just drive around at 25 miles an hour and you would, you would place a stop sign over here. So people coming this direction would stop and wait. I mean, there, the traffic would be very low on this, on this leg, because it's really just the people coming from these properties. This is no longer there, right? So the very low traffic volumes, you just put a stop sign here and those people would then be able to turn in, out, whatever, from the stop sign. But people moving along Redford would, would free flow. If you did the, the T intersection, gets a little trickier because left turns, no stops, that kind of thing. That's it's, and this is the reason that I prefer the curved option is it's very clear what the priority is here on what you're doing. If you, if you were to do the, let me go to the the T option. In this option, I mean, again, you, you don't have a lot of traffic on the north leg. So there's, there's clearly a stop sign here. You can do a, a right turn on, you know, no, no stop, right turn for the people doing this. But the northbound movement's a little tricky because it's, it's, it's not, it's not as clear when you're, when you're making a left turn that you don't, you wouldn't have to stop. So we'd have to think about that. And it, it's not, can't give you an answer right off the bat with the best thing for that is, I mean, you could put a stop sign here, but that's stopping everybody that's traveling along Radford. And that doesn't, that, that's why I don't necessarily love that option. The, the goal here is to improve the operations for everybody on Radford, especially if we're undertaking something big like this. So to do that would, would, you know, not, not necessarily be the best thing. It, it would work, but it wouldn't be the best thing.
Ben, with this, with this diagram here, if we go up to the top of where Radford comes on to Asbury, would there ever be a possibility that you could make that a one lane, one lane road up to Asbury, right turn only?
Well, yeah, you certainly could. So this is something I was actually thinking about today when, when, when we were talking about this option. The Radford up here, if you were to put a median up here like this, I mean, it wouldn't have to go that far because you don't need to block the driveways. So sorry, but if you, if you were to put a median up there, Radford could really remain, you know, as a right in, right out from up here and it wouldn't be a big deal. So people wanting to move, go right, right up here could still come northbound and, and go like this. And that would operate really well because you're, I mean, the thing that, the thing that causes intersections not to work is the left turns. The lefts off of here cause problems. The lefts from here certainly cause problems. But if you, with this realignment, I mean, you, you could certainly make it, leave it like this. You could even leave the, the people coming from here, the ability to do this. That doesn't hurt anything. The only people that would, and in that case though, I mean, then the, the, you know, the reason for having this here, you know, might not make as much, well, I shouldn't say that. It still works well. It's just that you're taking, the, the problem movement in these things are the left turns here and the left turns here. This is, this has always been the problem between these two intersections. And if you did this, even with the roundabout and the four-legged intersection, you're basically eliminating both of those problem movements. So you could do this, you wouldn't have as much traffic using this because people would, some people would just come through and do this. Others are going to go through and make the right here. It wouldn't matter. It probably would only depend on what kind of control we use down here in that scenario. If you had that curve down here and this came in and was a stop sign, you could still do that, but it would, it would obviously, you know, the people that want to come around would clearly just come down this way because then they don't have to stop when they get to this, this, and then cross traffic to make a left turn. They would just be able to do it at the roundabout. So I know I'm throwing a lot at you and it's a lot of variables. At the end of the day, those are all minor variables that just result in whether or not you go with this option versus the two roundabouts option and whether you have the curve or not. All of these things though, kind of point, you know, again, to why I like the curved option better is because cleaning up the control at this intersection right here is going to make a big difference on, on how everything else might work.
I guess the only reason I had suggested that right-hand turn up above is if we went with the T intersection, that might alleviate some of the, the left-hand turn on to that new street, get up to the roundabout to get into, to go Asbury into town where they just go straight and turn and straight with a right-hand turn up above.
Yes. Yeah. And, and like you said, I mean, you, you could not have this turn on here and just have a northbound right turn. That would be fine too. I mean, it wouldn't make, wouldn't make a big difference. But it would, that would eliminate the people that, that would come there and make the right and then need to make a left again. You might as well eliminate that movement if you can, especially if you're doing all this stuff.
Well, Ben, if you don't put a divider in there, you have a business right on the corner on the left side. I'm wondering about entering and exiting that. I, I mean, it just seems like we're congesting in a backup where the whole idea, if we do go with it, the one roundabout is to eliminate that intersection and traffic. And I, I think it just complicates it more.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, if you, if you, obviously this is cut off and you don't have a road here. You know, you, you have the driveway or you're talking about this driveway right here, right?
Yeah. And I would worry about that entrance there too, because that's another shortcut. You take a left turn and you go right through the daycare back out on Radford.
Right, right. Exactly. I mean, we, we would definitely have to discuss what happens with the median through here. I mean, you could, you certainly, these people or, or this, this business here, if you realigned this road, people coming down, coming down Asbury, it would be safer for us to have them come all the way around and then make their left turn and come up into here like this. That would be the preferred way because then we're getting them out of here. We're cutting off that ability for people to drive through because you're going to want this access here, right? So those are the things that, yeah, you, you would need to discuss as well.
I have a question with this picture up there right now. See where the driveway is that goes into where the old city hall is? Is there going to be a median in front of that? So that new business that's established there, do they have to make a right turn only out of that property or can they get across Asbury to turn?
It'd be quicker to turn right boomerang around the roundabout.
Yeah, you would, you would, you'd want them to do this. So I mean, ideally you would have a median through there because that would, that would solve some problems, right? The, the issue is that if you have a median in front of it, then the people coming eastbound wanting to get in there can't come in. So again, again, that's, I mean, something that we would need to train, just talk about and make sure we understand. Because yeah, the, the, the left turns, just deleting some of this stuff so that we can talk a little bit, but you know, if you have the mean back to this, I mean, the driveway, I don't know, it's somewhere over here, right?
No, no, the driveway, you can see the driveway on the picture.
Oh, this one?
That's the only driveway that's in there right now.
Okay. Okay. So I mean, that one, that one, you know, the, the challenge is of course that you want these people, you know, need to be able to get in there now. Depending on what, what you were to do with this property or whatever, I suppose there could be an access point up here somewhere. And if you did that, then, then the people coming this way would be able to go like that. But yeah, if you had a median in here, the people coming out of that driveway would go in and they'd make a U-turn around the roundabout and go back to the east.
So what about, okay, now go right, straight across from that driveway, those two homes that are still there?
Yep.
Um, how do they go west?
Well, exactly. I mean, all of these things are, are, are challenging, right? I mean, we, we, we heard from the property owner, I think, that lives here. And we talked about the median being here so that these people can get out and go back this direction. I mean, the, the, the nice part about the two roundabout option is that when you have another roundabout here, you can have a median between them all. And the people can make U-turns on both ends of it and go either direction. And they, they really are only, you know, backing out if people back out of these driveways in the one direction of traffic because they can make a U-turn at the upstream or downstream. So there, there is certainly a benefit to the two roundabout alternative with that in mind. But yeah, you, you certainly are creating potential issues for this if we put a median up and down here. The, the way we have it right now. So if we, we just go back, go back in time or go back a little bit on what we're talking about. If we did this single roundabout option and we just, just put this median back in there or, or we shortened up this median right here like this and just simply close this road off, we'd be leaving the access to all these properties exactly the way they are today.
We would still have the turn lane too, correct? So it's not like some.
You still have the center turn lane. I mean, I think when we originally were talking about this, th- this is what we, what we really planned. So the, the only reason we were talking about a median along this roadway was if you really talked about having a right in, right out, or just a right out from this roadway. But you really wouldn't need it. I mean, again, people can come up and make their right turn. So, you know, going back to the first comment, it just creates some complications, of course, if we were to, if we were to do that and put some kind of median in here. No, you couldn't. If you just had that right out again, you could just have a short median in here to make sure that people can't, you know, basically it would look like something like this. You just have a short median in here. So people coming up this road could only go right. And that's, that, that maybe would be all you would need. And then, and then you, you just wouldn't touch any of the rest of this stuff so that people can still do what they do today. In, just in, in general speak, traffic engineering things, they don't worry too much about residential driveways onto roads. They don't, they're not big problem causers. Commercial properties are the ones that, you know, cause issues with crashes and that kind of thing along corridors. But when you have a, a three lane roadway like But when you have a, a three-lane roadway like this with a middle turn lane, they're generally not a lot of crashes. And I don't know the exact history along here, but if I remember back when we talked about this a long time ago, there wasn't much for crashes along here.
Ben, how do you control the walking traffic if you don't put a median in or if you do put one?
If you, the, the, what, what traffic, the walking traffic?
Walking traffic, uh, when we were doing two roundabouts, we had a place for them to walk across where Radford was with a. Stop in between with an island or whatever you wanna call it. And then if we go with the one roundabout with a wider, are we still looking at how you're gonna walk through that area?
Yeah, we, we would just leave, I mean, much like it is today, like right here, you have a crosswalk. Um, we would leave that there, it, it'd just be like a mid-block crossing. Um, I mean, if you really wanted to, you could look at having a flashing, a flashing light for it. But you could leave it there as a, as a single crossing, I mean, you, you could potentially put one. You know, over here through, if you were to put a little median in here, you could do that, you could even extend that median, I guess. Uh, up to like here and then have a, a crossing where the, the people could stop in the middle. Cause that still wouldn't affect any of your driveways. You just wanna make sure this is designed so people coming this way have enough room to get in here to make this left turn like this. Um, you know, all those are, are, are little details, of course. Probably wouldn't be a big change from what's there today though, as far as people trying to cross. Right now, it's a non-controlled, this, this crossing that's here today. Would get easier because you, the people trying to make this crossing wouldn't have to be worried about what's happening on Radford Street too. They'd only be looking in the two directions that they have to get across. Up at the roundabout itself, we don't have crosswalks drawn on here right now, but we would add crosswalks in here. You know, that looks something like this. Just to, to give, you know, accessibility all the way around here for people that are walking.
Excuse me, hey Beth, sorry to interrupt, Kurt's trying to get on Zoom, have you seen him? When he get, go ahead, Ben, thank you.
No, that's all, that's all I am.
Okay, so, so in general, I'm just counsel. I don't see any issues that are, we can't overcome with the single roundabout. As far as access to the two or three residential properties, access to, um, Frog Hollow, pedestrian crossings. And I'm just asking, do you see anything we can't overcome if we go with a single roundabout with regard to all this discussion we've had with Radford, existing Radford? Intersection. Eventually I wanna get into the concerns, I mean, these, these are important things when you make this decision, you need to think about all, everything that ties into that decision. Going from a single, going from a double to a single, but I wanna make sure we get a chance to talk about the residents concerned that are, you know, along the, the redirected. Roadway. So, uh, is everybody happy with, we can, we can solve these issues, I mean. You wanna keep discussing this intersection or do you wanna move on to the?
I'm, I'm guessing if we're talking about possibly opening Radford, then that brings in a whole can of worms of going back to two. If we're gonna close Radford off, then I think we'd look at two as opposed to one, but I don't see the advantage of leaving the end of Radford open. For the right turn there, here, we've got two intersections again. That are so close together that I'd just soon close one off, I'd like to know that before I decide what.
No, I, I fully understand, it's, you know, get past this part so we know we're okay with the single roundabout and all, all the. Underlying issues that it creates.
Bob, the only, the only reason I suggested the right turn up at the top was, I would only do that if we went. With the T-intersection down below, I was trying to save having to buy another house. Bringing a T in, it would alleviate that, a lot of the traffic that comes up Radford Road instead of having to make that sharp left-hand turn onto the. The T, if you open it up for right turn only at the top, they could get out that way and it would alleviate a little pressure. That, that's all I, but I, I.
Enter your own, enter your own risk, right?
Right, and, and that, it does make some sense to me, I, I'm, I, I don't disagree with that. If you left it as a T, if you do the curve, I would just go back to, you know, not worrying about leaving any of this open up here.
I mean, in the scheme, if you're coming off Asbury Circle Court Place, whatever that is. The time it takes to make the, you know, the big loop around. Could be a, a savings overall, given the time you have to sit at that, even to make a right turn at the intersection, it may seem, yes, it seems longer to go around, but. In real time, you know, to go around and be completely not have to stop at all, it could be quicker to, to take the thing.
They would have a stop sign either way. So they'd have to wait for, because the, the, the new street would be through, through street. So they might have to wait there or they have to wait.
Well, they do right now because if they're come, they have to wait right now if they're coming on to at Radford, they have to wait anyhow, right? So, so the net is no different, they still have to wait for Radford traffic, the question is, is it quicker to go around or sit at the intersection and try to make a right-hand turn on Asbury? But. I'm just saying, the argument would be, well, it's quicker to go that way, well, it is, distance-wise, but time-wise, maybe not.
I, I would say with, from a safety standpoint too, I think you're, I mean, by making that right turn off of Radford. To follow back through the cold, through the roundabout, uh, I mean, from a safety standpoint, I think. Most studies have shown that'd be safer than trying to make the left. Well, I'm sorry, to actually make the right onto the higher traveled, uh, Asbury Road.
Yeah, it's easier to go around the loop.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, I mean, you're, you're adding literally seconds to people, not, not anything more than that. And that's, we're, we're talking ten seconds probably onto anybody's travel time. And probably an easier right turn and just getting rid of an intersection altogether, which is a safer, safer option. So I, yeah. If I'm sounding like I'm, I'm advocating for the right out at Radford, it, it's not necessarily that, I'm not, I'm, it's, again. Just entertaining the idea that came up because of the T-intersection and it, and it may have some merit if, if you were to go that way. That we could figure out later.
T-intersection, we just consider it, if we, we can make the curved entrance down on Radford, then I'm fine with closing.
Okay, so, again, back to the Radford intersection, open, closed, one-way, not islands, are, are we good in the fact that we can? Move on to the single roundabout and, and discuss the other issues that, that creates? Okay, alright, so then now back to the, the rerouted road and we've talked about the curve versus the T-intersection. I guess, big things that can come into play is, you know, the intrusion on their property, how are we going to screen for noise and, and light? Are we gonna protect them from errant vehicles entering their yards, potentially hitting their homes? Stormwater, I think you've talked about, but I mean, wh- what can we do, what will we do? Are you as a council concerned about diminishing the value of any properties along here and if so, what would you do, anything? We got, you know, about fifty minutes to discuss this and again, we've got other meetings, I'm not trying to wrap it up this one, but I'm trying to make the most use of this hour, hour and a half. With the people we have available.
Nate, how much space, when we come up at, uh, Asbury Road, you know, when we put the new Asbury Road in there? There's that green space along the road now that the city owns, how wide is that approximately?
So, on Asbury Road, I believe it's a sixty-foot right away, but I'd have to double-check that. A- and, uh, are you talking like the boulevard between, so you have the road then about like a four-foot? Green space, then a five-foot walk?
Yeah, till you get to the prop, their property line.
I don't know the width of the right away on Asbury.
But I guess what I'm trying to do is, so people can envision, that's approximately, you know, a little bit shorter. But that's approximately the width that we'd be talking about on both sides of this road. So we could, there could be trees, there could be a hedge, there could be a lot of different, in that, in that amount of space, you can put a lot of things. Cut down on some of that.
There would be enough room to do various, if you wanted to go to the extensive, doing some type of guardrail barriers. Um, but you could do, um, shrubs or like plantings, trees. Um, you could do some type of fence, I mean, there's various options for blocking out light, sound. Um, it, it's just, that's more of a design question, I mean, I guess, uh, what I can do is, you know. Try to assure you guys that those are problems that can be solved and then to actually make a decision on how you solve that would be during the design process. I mean, if you wanna add anything, Ben, go ahead.
No, that's, that's exactly it, I mean, fences, shrubs, trees, all of those things are, are things that are normally used. For these kind of, these kind of things.
Ben, since you've got the cursor, can you just kinda highlight where you think which homes we would need to? Yeah, cause I don't, this isn't the entire corridor, right, I mean. Coming south from the roundabout, where the headlights shine, where the noise, I mean, we, we get down to three or four homes that we're trying to. Minimize disruption.
I really think this is really the, the, the critical spot. Because you, you would, I mean, you're coming down the hill and the headlights would be flashing down here in a spot they've never been before. You know, along this section, I mean, maybe it, it's, it's, it's a little bit more challenging, especially if, if with the T, the T-intersection creates. You know, the problem with you're coming straight onto these properties that weren't there before, not to mention the driveways right across from the. If you have the curved roadway again, you know, you might, you'd have that, if I go back to that, um, exhibit. I mean, in this, this case, again, it's, it's not as much, but I mean, maybe you'd have a little something over here. Because of the people that would be coming around here, but, you know, you wouldn't have a lot, cause you wanna keep the sight distance there, but. Yeah, I mean, the, the concern with headlights and some of those things are, it's really only a couple of properties that, that would have that concern. Now, the, the people coming around this way, I mean, I, I suppose you could, you could throw some stuff up here too to give some kind of blockage to that. That house up there that doesn't have it before, um, with this T in here, you, you've got the, you know, the. Straight ahead, but again, there's a lot of distance in there, so. I, I, I don't know exactly until you get into looking at it in more detail. But there are ways, I mean, there's ways to do it and it, it's not like you would need fences up and down this thing or shrubs. The whole way, it's, it's, there's pieces of it that would need some, some blocking.
I think some of the people indicated they were worried about the noise. So if we had a soundproof fence, I've seen a lot of them around different areas in different cities, that, that might be something.
The only issue there is, we don't have any soundproof fence along Asbury though, I mean, same, we don't have it anywhere, so I, I guess that.
Maybe we could do it in time, you know, if it's really, really bad.
I mean, one, one thing to, to consider too is with this option with the radius on both sides, I mean, that's, that's designed with the minimum. Radius for twenty-five mile an hour, so, um, we'd have to control this section of roadway with twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. And that's, you know, ten miles an hour slower than Asbury Road. You know, I think the sound from twenty-five mile an hour roadway is probably quite, quite a bit less significant.
Nate, the other, the other question that one of the citizens brought up the other day was, as you're coming down off of. Asbury Road and making that first corner, you see the two townhouses at the bot, that there's two, two, two townhouse units right there. They're probably real close to the property line and then there's a retaining wall there right now, so. I would assume we're gonna bring the road down and you wouldn't build it up, or build it right next to the retaining wall, right?
Right, I mean, I think there's room, you know, as Ben had shown, you know, if we needed to slide things a little bit to the north to accommodate something like that, we could. But also coming off of Asbury and heading south, if we had to drop elevation, we could start coming down from Asbury Road. So you could make up, you know, some, some level of elevation before you got close to those townhomes.
So, so realistically, what we can do if we acquire that property that's a hundred feet wide, we'd slide this thing a little bit further north. So that it would go down that hundred-foot strip and could still potentially put the corner, the round.
Yeah, you're saying kinda do something how Ben had drawn a little bit different there, yeah, I can let Ben speak to that, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, my, my thought when I looked at this was just that, you know, we, this was all square and everything, but. Coming off the roundabout, we can, we can change it a little bit and potentially come off at a little bit of an angle here. But, you know, trying not to get not in, into this property. Cause I, I, I recognize what you're saying there, there is a, a fairly hefty retaining wall in the back of, in the back of that property. And trying to understand, I mean, there, there are definitely some grading challenges that go along with this, you're coming down the hill and coming around. All those things, you know, can be, can be figured out, we'd have to, we'd have to dig into that a little more with it. It might be, you know, a different retaining wall, added-on retaining wall with a fence on top, a crash barrier or whatever. We deem necessary, usually this far off the road, it's twenty-five mile an hour speed, you don't need to have crash barriers and stuff. If you're, if you're a little ways off the road, but we might, we might determine that, that's something you wanna do up there.
Just, just as you get into the design, then the, the property, I would envision the road moving a little farther to the west at the top end. Because those two lots would be something that would probably be looking at and possibly the one right below it. And then the two, the two housing, the two houses in the yellow one to the right of the road. Um, wouldn't be as affected down on the bottom curve, you'd move the upper part to the west a little bit and the bottom part a little bit to the north. And we can go, we could pretty much get by with most.
Excuse me, Beth, will you email the link to Kurt? Tony doesn't have the link. Oh, I'll, I'll do it, go ahead, thank you.
Okay, so what do you say about the light, the lights? The headlights, can we do about the headlights shining into people's houses?
Yeah, I think that's kinda what Ben had touched on before, is you could do various, you know, shrubs or bushes or fencing to, to block that light pollution. And, and target areas where it would make sense to do that.
Because the, it's gonna be lower.
Well, it would just, um, anywhere you might have that potential conflict, so say we're coming off Asbury Road south and it's those townhomes. Maybe you add some shrubs or something, you know, on the city side of that retaining wall that's there now or something to block some of that light. Or if you're coming back towards the east, towards Radford and you're, you're looking at those houses on the other side of Radford Road, the east side. You know, as Ben, he kinda drew a few different spots where you could potentially block some of that light pollution as well.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's probably just some targeted spots where you would put some shrubbery or fence or something like that in.
Hey Ben, I was gonna ask you, in the studies we did, um, are you expecting more traffic from the school buses? And less maybe truck traffic because there's really nowhere to go to Radford from. I mean, right now, we're not experiencing a lot of it, but on, on, uh, Asbury Road, truck traffic has increased with the. New art, our cereal going through, but I was wondering about the bus traffic, if we thought we'd have more school buses using this route? Or do you have any background on that or knowledge?
I, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly, but I, I mean, one of the, one of the things that we do know is that. It's really, really difficult to make this turn right now and that may deter them from using it today. You know, so if I, if I had to guess, I would say, yeah, there, there, there may be bus routes and different bus things that would happen because of this change. Because the, the, the potential that it's a lot easier for the bus drivers to make a left turn here. I mean, they may be, uh, I mean, we'd have to talk to the busing company directly, but they may be doing alternative routes. The bus companies do that all the time when, when they have difficult spots to get in or out from. So, yeah, I mean, the answer is, don't completely know the, it, but. We could suspect that there might be more bus traffic, yes.
Good on noise and light. We can address that.
The only thing, did we address foundations?
Um, yeah, there's various things you can do. I mean, there's monitoring you can do with like various um. Size, seismological. Um. You know, readings and stuff you can, you can take during construction, um. Or you could hire like an outside inspection firm to go inside and inspect the foundation prior to construction, just to. Things and just, you know, check on it after. Um, I did throw up a, a couple of pictures just to show on some various other projects. Within Asbury itself, where we've installed storm sewer between two houses and you can see the area that was disturbed. You know, there's one example up on the TV screen.
Those weren't cement block foundations.
No. Craig, don't you have cinder block and, yeah, how'd that work for you?
Yeah, I mean, they just reconstructed our streets uh this summer and we've got a cinder block uh placement. We had no issues with it. I've seen no cracking, nothing, no, no problems with the foundation.
I mean, ultimately, we would do inspections and if something happens on the contractor, right? I mean, they're responsible for the damage.
Yeah, I mean, it gets a little gray there where um we would do. You know, certainly before construction, we could meet with property owners and get photos ahead of time just to document the situation as is, so it's not. You know, after construction, they come and say this cracked and the crack was already there or something, but. Um, we could document it. Um, if there were to be damage done and it was determined that it was due to construction, then it would turn into a contractor city issue. I mean, it's, it gets kind of gray on, well, you know, the contractor was hired to do the job in the city's lot and they did what they were supposed to do. And if they did it by the book and something happened, but. I mean, we're going to be, the most we're going to do is probably have a, you know, a vibratory plate compactor. Um, compacting a trench for storm sewer or something of the like. Um, out underneath where the roadway would be and. Um, you know, Craig, as you said, if you didn't have any issues with Hales Mill, I, I'd imagine we might even have more room between the roadway and these houses. In this scenario. So it's, it's more of a, something that could it happen? Sure, but is it likely? Probably not.
One other question that'll just come up and I, we talked about phase one and phase two. Um, when we do phase one, which is the three-legged roundabout, we don't, we, it might be advantageous to do phase. Two at the same time, but it doesn't necessarily have to. If we're looking for grants or anything like that, I mean. It'll, we'll be able to attach onto that at any point, right?
Correct.
I was going over the video again this afternoon of what we had last meeting and there was a considered. Concerned citizen about the decrease evaluation. Is that? Something that we should address or is that something that's not going to happen?
Well, that's a tough call. That was like the sidewalks, sidewalks. Improve the value of a house or decrease it. How, you're not going to know what you're going to.
I don't know. I don't know how to phrase this. It's a good question and it's, it's a valid concern. But do you as a council, we as a city proactively just start writing out checks or do you? Again, I, I don't know how to phrase it, but you just let the issue take its course and if they feel it comes down to litigation, then I, I guess. You take your chances at that point in time or when they try to sell it or do you? I mean, again, you just start writing out checks because you think you devalued your property and without having, I mean. It, it's a concern. I, I, I don't, I, I sympathetic with, with, with the property owners, but I, I don't know how. How you address this and I'm, I, we could probably reach out, Beth, the city of Dubuque or some of the cities like, because we've never done a new street, right? We've only done reconstruction, so. You know, we didn't really change the traffic or anything significant relevant to their, to, to their privacy or anything they have. We, we could reach out to s- before the next, we bring this up, we could, you know, what happens when you build a new street? I mean. Do cities typically, I don't know the answer. We can try to find out. They typically. Reach out and try to, try to work on a deal and give them upfront or I, I don't know.
I, I guess I was thinking about that one a lot too. It's, it's like you never know what. Could buy the property next to you and what could move in because I mean, it could be a group home, it could be. And which is, which, which should be allowed. It could be, there's a lot of different things that affect property, so I don't know how we could guarantee. You know, that it's not, we can't, I don't know how, how we could guarantee a value of a house.
We'll reach out, Beth, making it, we'll reach out and try to just see how, I mean, this, obviously this happens everywhere, new roads are put in and, and people are impacted, but. I, I don't know how else to do it.
I ju- I guess I just thought we should address one of the, the issues. Anything in Asbury goes drop of a hat fast anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the good news is that hopefully two or three, we aren't. I mean, the rest are already on Asbury, it's just the ones that, and, and I, and I hate to say this, but you know, for the Luther Manor homes, unfortunately. I mean, when they purchased those properties, you know, Luther Manor had, had a plan, they were, I think they had pretty good. Feeling that the development of Luther Manor, their backyards would be an extension of the Luther Manor campus. Luther Manor went bankrupt or in receivership and. That's unfortunate, but that's between them and Luther Manor that left them hanging. We as a city and you as a council have to, with best for six thousand residents, not. Necessarily, sometimes it does. Impact a small number, but you know, if, if Luther Manor would have managed better, they wouldn't have this conversation because you did. Stop going through their backyards at Luther's request. And they don't exist anymore in terms of this discussion, so. It's unfortunate, but you know, they're culpable in this discussion too and the fact that. Some of these people in Luther Manor campus now will potentially have a street in their backyard. I, it, it sounds harsh to say that, but I mean, they're culpable too. They gave us the opportunity to put this here and do what, what, what. Was the preferred solution, is still today the preferred solution to address the Asbury Road, Hales Mill, Radford intersections. So unfortunate, but they are culpable.
Jim, just one other thing that, since this will all be, the, the corridor will all be City of Asbury property. Then we would be responsible for those sidewalks. They're not on the homeowner's side. They won't be on homeowner's property. Right? Lane will have to do those sidewalks.
Makes sense, yeah.
Kind of like we do out along Asbury?
Yeah, um, you, yeah, it, it definitely given the width and the buffer between, yes, they would, would fall on the City of Asbury for snow removal. But you know, we've got, you talked about Asbury Road by, by Clay Ridge, we've got all, tarred on the park, it's not perfect. Lane's not here to throw anything at me, but i- it's a good point. We, we will pick up that responsibility.
I just one question. Tom, do you see, since you, you're, uh, you see any issues with it, with the proposal?
Excuse me, chief, could you come up to the post?
Yeah, some of my concerns were pedestrian traffic along Radford Road, whether that would continue. As it is now up to Asbury Road, so pedestrians wouldn't have to walk further west. They want to continue east. And again, with the sidewalks, who would take control of those sidewalks? Would that come to the property owners or that fall under the city's responsibility? And whether we'd make Radford Road. A three lane like Asbury currently is now and so get rid of the bike lanes along through there. Some of just suggestions I've had, have to fix some of the turning issues along Radford.
It would match up with Dubuque too.
Correct, it would be consistent all the way through then if you put in a center turning lane and do away with the bike lanes.
I mean, from my, I do not like that, that crosswalk at Asbury and Radford. I mean, it's. It, I mean, it's, it, it is what it is, but. You know, ideally, and there isn't one in Red, Hales Mill and Asbury, no flashing lights, so basically we're just going to pick it up and move it. We're only going to have ones, we're not appreciably changing pedestrian access that Radford Road is just going to be. Few hundred yards west.
Maybe we could think, as you and I both know, we've driven the route, it's shorter to go to school down Radford Road than the way they go now, so. Maybe we find a way to better way for them to get across the road.
Well, they have it because they come up. Anybody that lives, like you said, on, in Sun Valley or Hail, Hales Mill, believe it or not, it's quicker. If you're anywhere on Hales Mill Road, it's quicker to get to the middle school via Radford than it is to go up Spring Green and, and cross. The other way, it's, it's minimal, but it is short. And this would encourage them to take that route probably more so now than it did before.
And they could have sidewalks where they don't on Spring Green.
All right, well, you've got a little, little less than a half hour. What else? Else is there for discussion?
Tom, before you go, when, do you anticipate a problem since? Radford and Hales Mill are both thirty-five and we're going to cut those corner, that down to twenty-five in that strip? Is that, shouldn't be an issue, should it?
I wouldn't think so, given the curb through there. I don't, coming off the roundabout, I wouldn't think traffic would get up to thirty-five miles through those curves anyway. Depends if there's a stop sign down there, they're going to have to stop sort of for, so.
You s- do sta- do roundabouts typically have a fifteen mile an hour speed limit or twenty-five? I, I, I think there's a speed limit sign going into those.
The, the signs that go into them are generally just warning signs, the yellow type of signs for fifteen, but the, the design of them is. That you have to slow down to that speed to, to negotiate the curbs as they go through. It's not necessarily a, a regulatory thing as much as it is. Just it's designed to be slow, like, you know, the curves that are there are there on purpose to make people go slow through it.
Yeah, there should be yield signs on all four corners, so it, it would slow them down, definitely.
Correct, yeah.
Um. So do you, are you ready? I know with the question about the, the devalued property and what cities historically have done. Are you ready to take this upward discussion at December twelfth meeting? Or if not, what do you need? Again, I. The right decision is, is better to wait, but we do have people hanging here for now, it's been almost a month and it could be potentially another six weeks.
I, I guess I'm ready. The only question I would have would be what, what the rest of the council feels about is, is as far as the timing goes. Are we going to say conceptually, this is what we like? We, you know, so we don't have any dollars and cents on phase two yet. So we're basically, when you, when we bring this to council, it's just, this is the way we want to proceed, but we won't have dollars and cents on it. For that, at that point, we have dollars and cents on the three-legged, but I don't, or maybe we don't.
Well, we, we have a, an estimate of, of the construction cost, right, Nate?
Yeah, we have estimates. Um, I, I think what Russ might be getting at is, you know, are you saying you're committing to phase one with the three-leg roundabout? And that's what's going, but for phase two, it's more of a, you know, this is the idea that we are planning on doing. And it's just the timing of it. A- a- and where it comes into play would be as if, you know, the council, there was discussion at, at one point. Weeks ago about potentially doing phase two at the same time as phase one, that's where it would kind of come into play of wanting to get a decision sooner or later. I suppose if, if you were going to go that route.
Right, I guess I thought maybe what we're looking for at the next council meeting is just approval to go from the two-legged to, to the, to the single. And we're still not, we, we still haven't finalized when phase two would be done.
Absolutely, just the, the property owners know, you as a council know as properties come up for, for acquisition, this is the direction you're going. And I said it last time, in two years, we could have new council member that they could say, nope, you're stupid, we're doing this and then two years after that, they could flip back. Be nice when you have the support for a project, you get it done before this, you know, waffles back and forth, but. No, I was just looking for, okay, this is, this is the intended plan. You've been on, put on notice for better or worse, I, you know, you're a property owner in this area, this is how it's going to go. Is your issues, this is how councils discuss how it can be done and, and the timetable. Dubtails back into CIP and potential uh grant applications, which we're just not really pushing until we know you want to go that way. It's potential, maybe we could get some money from DMATs and throw them together at the same time, but. I'm just looking for, the residents deserve an answer to know where they sit and. If you're ready at December twelfth meeting with a couple of things you've asked about, I'll put it on the agenda, we'll get the word out. We'll fill the place, but you, you know, I'm hoping you can make a decision at that point if you're comfortable.
I'm ready to move forward with it.
With a decision, that's all I'm asking.
I'm sorry, wait.
But you're ready to move forward with a decision?
Correct.
Spot right now.
Yes.
All right. Well, I haven't found Kurt yet, so I guess we'll have to, we'll have to listen to recording later. Anything else then for Ben, Nate, uh, general staff to follow up on?
There was one thought I had for Ben. Uh, one thing. Should this be considered part of a truck travel route? Uh, going through this roundabout or should we look at maybe designating truck routes which would take them? Not going through the roundabout to Radford.
Uh, I don't, it wouldn't really make a difference. The, the roundabout would be designed to handle trucks. It, it really would be up to you then and if you, I mean, if you have a preferred route that you want them to use. But the, the roundabout itself would not be a reason to, to take away truck access, I guess. If you're, if you're looking to designate a truck route.
I guess I'm trying to lim- uh, lessen the amount of heavy truck traffic that would be going down that. Uh, connect curving road.
Yeah, and certainly, and that, I mean, that would be a consideration that you, you could have, I mean. Do I, am I overly concerned with that? No, it's still going to be a twenty-five mile an hour roadway that would be designed for trucks and all of those things. Um. Certainly, I guess there could be some concern they're coming down the hill and all that's, all of that, but I. I, I, it wouldn't be a big concern for me. If, if it is for you guys, of course, you could, you could look at other routes, but I, I wouldn't be overly concerned with it. I don't, I don't remember in front of me, I don't have the truck percentage numbers, I don't remember them being super high on, on Redford Road. As it was, but. Um, I could certainly look at that.
I just had one other question I thought of, Nate. Um, when we had, when we had our meetings the last time, I think, and, and Beth, you can help me with this too, but. There was like three point one million dollars for the two-legged and for the two roundabouts and three point two for the single. Is that approximately right? And, and if that's the case, does that, do either of those costs or the, the cost for the single roundabout? Does that include the cost for this new, the, the road extension?
The, the road extent, are you talking about the curve off of Red? Okay, so. Um, it would probably add a little bit of cost to re, reconfigure that as the curve and then have the uh. North part of Radford tee into it, but I, cost-wise, the, the two options were relatively. Close to each other.
Right, but I just, I just meant did that, since they're both close, did that single roundabout include? The road stretch, the new road stretch from Asbury to Radford?
Yes, yeah, the, the second phase is what you're talking, yeah.
Did not include the sweep and that's.
Sorry, sorry for my.
Moving the T intersection, okay. All right, anything else? Again, we got fifteen minutes, Nate. Okay, um, for those on, in the, in the, in the chamber on Zoom, Beth, you can leave Zoom open and just mute or you're going to close and restart? Okay. Okay. All right, so if you, if you're on Zoom, if you want to uh rejoin at seven o'clock shortly before, if you want to address the council or anything, again, we will take input. Um, there'll be no dialogue, we'll limit the input at least in terms of time for this project. But we will close the Zoom meeting and open it again in about five minutes to seven if you want to rejoin. With that, um, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, okay. See if we can locate Kurt.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.